Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this January 7th Board of Commissioners meeting. This evening, we have the Reverend Walter Gallup here for our invocation and pledge.
Commissioners, the holidays are over, and I'm delighted to be here to offer a prayer for the beginning of a new year, for all the opportunities and work that needs to be done. Let us pray.
Our Father in Heaven, we ask you to be with us as we begin a new year. Preserve in our hearts and minds a large measure of the Christmas spirit that has passed this year. Even after we have taken down the Christmas tree and laid aside their decorations, we still need the beauty and the dreams and the joy to walk with us into a new year. As we walk across another year's boundary, facing the clamor of governing, of commerce, the suffering and pain of our neighbors, we still need a guiding star and a heavenly vision and a remembrance of a holy child born. As our paths lead away from the Christmas season and level out into the realities of life, grant that the vision of the angels and their song, "Bless on Earth," shall still inspire us and their heavenly assurance always from the drabness and the dullness of mere living. Keep our lives reverent this year, that we may serve you as we serve our community and our nation. Hear our prayer, oh Lord, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. Okay. Have any changes to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda. I'd like to add, under New Business, item number one, a Commissioner's appointment to the Admiral Commission Board.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The young commission passes. All right, public comment. Oh, well, I'm gonna get that under Commissioner. We're now do it. Just take a moment. The legislature reminded me. I have a couple of empty chairs here this evening. Mr. McCord is out continuing education for his job as a sheriff's deputy. We wish him well. And Commissioner Etheridge is out this evening. He's had some health problems of late, and so he was not able to attend this night. And we wish him a speedy recovery and hope to see him again soon. With that, we have public comment next on our agenda, and I have Ms. Ann Bell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Commissioners, I'm Ann Bell. I live at 1120 Shawboro Road. I'm here tonight to ask for you to look into the signage on Highway 12 going to Corolla regarding the Wellhead Club. When I'm speaking of Highway 12, it is when you cross into Currituck County. Our county was once known for the hunting clubs. We attracted people from all over, including the hunters that held positions in our country's government. We have the beautiful attraction of one of the famous ones known as the Wellhead Club. But we want to attract people to the Outer Banks, or to our Outer Banks. We have tourists already here, but they don't have a clue about the Wellhead and why it was built in the first place. I work retail in Corolla five days a week, and when I see customers come in with a sticker that says, "I climbed the lighthouse," I always ask, "Did you tour the Wellhead Club?" "No, where is the club?" And my response is, "The big yellow house that's on the grounds of the lighthouse." Then their reply is, "Didn't know it was open to the public." Then the question is, "What's the purpose of the house?" I go into my spiel as a very small version of the Biltmore in Asheville, for the sole reason of the era that this home was built and why it was built. Even tourists that are on the grounds of the Wellhead and the lighthouse, you mentioned the Wellhead Club, they have no clue, open to the public, or anything about tours. We, as a county, must do a better job to pull people to our jewel of hunting clubs that date back to 1925. I've taken pictures, and each of you should have a copy of it. The first one is example of what I thought signs could possibly look like. We have the Wellhead Club sketched where our county decal is, and maybe underneath it have historic Wellhead Club, home of the 1925 hunting clubs. Tours are available. The second picture is in front of the Wellhead. There's nothing that states that there are tours or is open. This third picture is as if you walk up from the sound side, there is a sign that says "Tours available," but as you can see in the previous picture, you can't see that sign at all. The fourth picture is a sign, but it's across from the road in front of the club, just Wellhead Club. The fifth and final picture is the only sign that states tours with all the other information that you can do on the grounds. Nothing states the direction of our Wellhead Club at all. The Biltmore has signs along the road that brings tourists to their state. We need to exactly do the same thing to bring tourists to our piece of history. When you go on the grounds, a sign needs to be a freestanding one, hopefully directing people, stating what it is and that tours are available. Tour times need to be listed, possibly outside the Wellhead Club, in case it's closed or tourists are just walking around the grounds. A brochure I've also attached to each of you, there's no mention of tour times or the different tours that are available. A tourist should have all the information for the tours and costs within the brochure. Not everybody goes to a website or wants to call a number. Most people want to have all the information together when they pick it up. I just truly feel like this is something that we need to look into. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. Appreciate it. All right, next on the comment is Joe Dimnicki. Did I get that right? Sir, if you would please state your name and address for you.
Joe Dimnicki, 181 Beachwood Shore, Moyac, North Carolina.
Sir, are you here to speak to Farabee Acres rezoning?
Yes.
Would you like to speak when we actually talk about that, or during public comment this evening?
Uh...
You have your choice.
I'm gonna give you my, what do you call it, concerns here, and then...
Well, we have that as an agenda item this evening. You can speak under public comment when we bring that item up, if you'd like to.
Well, let me give you my concerns then.
Okay.
Okay. All right. 'Cause I got them written down here, mole and...
All right.
I got a system I gotta do here.
Okay.
Okay. My big concern is, I'm 200 feet from where they're gonna put this housing area, according to the letter here. So I'm concerned about the flooding. We flood now in Beachwood Shores. I don't know what the planning committee, if they got anything on their agenda to look at this flooding and see what's gonna happen here. It seems to me, if they have this development down there, they're gonna put the housing there. I don't know how many houses they're gonna put in there, but that's all farmland and then wetland. And when it rains, all that water goes to the wetlands or the farmlands, and it sinks in. So if they're gonna... And we still flood. I've been here 41 years. We had one flood, I can remember, 20 years ago, but lately, we've been flooding two or three times here in the last two, three years. It's just unreal. I've never seen it like that. Okay. I just wanna know if we're gonna have more flooding later on. I don't know if you guys watched 60 Minutes or not, but this guy in the Netherlands, the Netherlands is under the sea level. They flooded in 1953. Since 1953, since this guy come in here, no floods in the Netherlands. They're under the water. They're under sea level. City of Hackensack, New Jersey, hired this guy, come down there to take care of the flooding. Hackensack, I don't know if you're familiar with New Jersey, by the Hudson River, it's all city. So he's planting these little canals and everything to take care of. I know it costs money, but you guys are the future here, so we oughta be thinking about that in Currituck here. Okay, that's my big concern, is the flooding, and if they're gonna do anything about it, or what their... How many, what do you call them, storm drains they're gonna have in there, how much water it's gonna take care of. This guy here figures out that, okay, you got 100 acres, you got so much water, this is what you gotta dig down there. I was just wondering if the planning guys know all about this. I'm sure they do. Another thing on 60 Minutes I watched yesterday was this young lady from the Bronx or the Queens or something like that, a social Democrat. Fantastic guy. You guys gotta watch that. This gal's got some good ideas. Where did this money come from? We spend $5 billion a month for Afghanistan. We've been doing that for what, 15 years? Where does the money come from? Education. We want education for our kids. We can't get it, but we're spending all this money. You guys got the purse strings here.
Not on a federal level, we don't.
Well, you got on a state level.
No, sir. We're just Currituck County.
What about the...
That's what you're represented for at a state and federal level.
Okay, but as far as the county goes, you guys raised my taxes.
Not in a while.
This last one, I used to pay $968 for my taxes. Now I'm paying $1,104. I know that's not a lot, but taxes went up.
It does...
All this development coming out here, everybody's developing down there. I thought we were getting some revenue. The Corolla gal just talked about it. We got a lot of money from them guys. So, anyway.
Well, okay, that's a discussion for another evening, sir. Thank you very much for your time and your comments. All right, next up, we have Chuck Florio. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, it's 243 North Currituck Road.
Thanks, sir.
And that's the rub, Currituck Road. Basically, I had something written down, but I'm gonna yield my time to Scott Applewhite, who's a neighbor. There are several neighbors, several neighbors with me tonight, and, well, it's a concern of the road. The road is a dirt road. I can't get a really straight answer on how it can be fixed. Some residents want it paved, some residents are happy with a dirt road, however, maintain properly. It's not maintained properly. The issue is, who maintains it? We saw the state DOT down in Currituck here, and it's kinda passing the buck to you guys, and I'll leave it at that. It's a safety issue. I used to be a fire rescue, and it's potentially dangerous. Those potholes pitch the vehicle in either direction violently, and there's gonna be an accident, and someone is gonna get hurt, and I don't want to see that happen. It probably needs either to be paved or quite a few loads of the proper material that doesn't wash away. They run the grader up and down the road, he said, every two weeks. It just makes it worse. If it's dry, pounds and pounds of dirt blow away. If it's wet, pounds and pounds of... The road has gone down about four inches since I moved there four years ago, the level of the road. There's other issues, too. The internet and the phone lines are buried in the road. Last time through, he cut the phone lines. They shouldn't be in the middle of the road, and that's an issue with CenturyLink, I suppose. But I'm gonna yield it to Scott Applewhite, and he has a little bit more information on how maybe to find a solution. That's what we're looking for. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
You should have, I can dress it if you can. It's up there.
Mr. County Attorney, maybe you could shed a little bit of light on the road situation for these folks.
Well, just in a general way, in the 1930s, the North Carolina General Assembly took the authority from counties to construct or maintain streets and roads in the state. So now, and ever since 1930s, streets and roads, their construction and maintenance are a state responsibility if the state has accepted a street or road into its system, or they're privately owned, and the responsibility of the owner of the underlying roadbed or the respective property owners that might have some interest over that particular accessway. Now, counties can request that the State Department of Transportation review a road and make a determination as to what might be necessary to bring it up to state standards so that the persons that live along the road may petition for it to be accepted into the state system. But that is a process that's gonna have to involve the State Department of Transportation, and if they come back and find that there needs to be certain improvements made to bring it up to state standards, that's gonna be the responsibility of the property owners that live along that street or road and/or the owner of the roadbed upon which the road is laid. The county, again, has no authority to do anything to construct or maintain a street or road.
Thank you, sir. All right. Please state your name and address as well, sir.
Yeah, my first name is Brian. It's Brian Scott Applewhite, 227 North Currituck Road. Appreciate the comment on the road. I do understand a requirement for the road to be maintained by the state. Started this process back in June. I'm gonna try to be as brief as possible. Started dealing with a North Carolina engineer, Randy Midget, to look into development, creating surveying the road, and it's kind of back and forth, back and forth with emails. We're currently at a status of the said road to... They are doing, attempting to create a secondary budget, the state attempted to create a secondary budget to have something done with the road. So I wanna kinda highlight a few things. It's kind of fell on deaf ears, so we kinda need a help with the county to help maybe move this along. One thing I wanna make important is, it is a safety issue. Fire an EMS traveling this road, extreme problem. School buses, unbelievable. School buses can hardly traverse this road. Coming down the road in the morning, school buses, you got, I mean, it's not a laughing or joking matter, but kids are literally, can't stay in the seat of the bus. Road's never been maintained properly, never. I don't know whether they have the funding or the knowledge on how to do it. So I'm gonna wanna appeal to the county for help as far as from a safety issue. I will continue to work my end through Mr. Midget through the state. He has, I have several correspondence from him, to which I'm not gonna sit here and read tonight. We don't have the time for that. That has said, we are progressing this. But I would like to refer that the county is somewhat behind this improvement as well. Try to get some leverage. I need leverage to trying to get this thing off point and off center.
Mr. Attorney, if I'm not mistaking, the process for a private road...
Is it a private road?
Or a road maintenance issue? I mean, but, or even private development, I mean, but the DOT would like to see a petition of the res... Correct me if I'm wrong, but to see a petition of the residences, then brought to the commissioners to approve a resolution to ask them to look at it, and then it's based up on what they wanna do. Is that kind of the process?
That's my understanding. I mean, county commissioners certainly can make a request, basically upon State Department of Transportation, to take a look at the road.
And then it's up to them, whatever the final decision is.
Right. Obviously, you have to the state to make a determination as to what is necessary.
I mean, we can draft a resolution, but I think the first step in the process is they like to see a petition of the residents come before the board, and then the board can adopt the resolution, the Senator's State, to have that looked into, and then it's up to them how they...
And a little bit of the way the funding for that works, Currituck County's in Division 1. I actually serve on the ARPO, which is the Road Committee, if you will. That project gets, has to be floated amongst the entire, how many counties are in our division?
And that was the understanding I received through the email, so...
There's like, there's like nine counties plus all the towns, you know, throughout Dare County. And so what happens is, it gets graded, and it's based on the number of people impacted. There's a bunch of factors that go in.
Yeah.
But the more, the more facts that you can give us, or give me, right, the better to try and make the case. But I, too, live on a dirt road, and I got the truck to prove it. It's just, I get it.
Well, I do, too. My road I live on is a private road, and I may have field for you, 'cause I can't do nothing. Well, it's obvious the state cannot maintain the road properly. They, I've talked to the local maintenance manager supervisor. He makes an attempt to it. We give him, I mean, but it just, the road cannot be... They are not capable of maintaining the road properly.
How many people live on the road? How many houses, dwellings?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw a guess at about 16 residents.
At least.
Yeah, 16. There is a consensus through, I've got a printout of all the property owners on there, and it is a consensus that the road, something be done to the road, road be maintained properly, whether it be paved or else. I personally would rather see it paved, continue spending money to do maintenance on it to no avail. You're just throwing away money, maintain it, create a budget, pave it, be done with it, walk away from it, never go back to it, so...
We need you to be up at the podium if you wanna make comment. It's hard to hear what's going on.
Okay.
It's, the reality is, there's so many projects and not enough money to go around, but the more you can get us, the better we can make the case, and at least get it into the system.
So we get it on the agenda for next month, maybe? Get something going? If I can get...
For us?
Well, if I can get a petition from the, from the, it's the Williams Farm subdivision. If I get a consensus from the Williams Farm subdivision, you can submit it.
Whatever you can get us, that's fine.
All right.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
And, sir, if you'd call LeAnn, she'll help you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
She's the bomb.
[laughing].
She'll come back.
All right, that was all I had signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else out there that would like to come forward this evening to speak? Okay, I'll close public comment. Moving on, Commissioners' report. I'll start out this evening. Well, I told you about Commissioner McCord and Commissioner Etheridge being out. We had a tourism advisory board meeting a few weeks back, and in light of the wake of hurricane season and how hard North Carolina was hit, tourism staff and county staff, they're all just county staff, they're gonna be, we're gonna be doing some planning, looking at aftermath planning. And it brought to light, with our neighbors down in the south, what happens after a major storm, right? We prep for hurricanes here, we're ready for it. When the time comes, when we evacuate and we do those things, but what happens to us afterward? What happens two, or three, or four, or five years down the road if we have to rebuild completely? So that's something we're gonna be working on in the next year. Towards the end of this month, the 25th and 26th, we have our annual retreat, and we don't retreat anywhere. It's kind of a misnomer. It's actually more of an annual planning session for the Board of Commissioners. We will be here in this, in this room, meeting to discuss future planning for the next year and our budget needs. So I just wanna make everyone aware of that, that that is open to the public. If you'd like to come and hear and see what we do and how we do it, please come and attend. We'd like to have you here. If we don't hear from you, we don't know what's on your hearts and minds. So please take a moment to show up or give us a call, let us know what's on your minds. I think that's it for me this evening. I believe you have some, something hot off the press for us this evening?
Yes, the report I'd like to give tonight is, of course, everyone realizes, we just came off our celebration for 350 years of Currituck County, and we received a letter addressed to the county and the citizens from the Governor's Office, Governor Roy Cooper. I'd like to go ahead and read this letter for everyone. He sends, and I quote, "Dear friends, as governor of North Carolina, it is my pleasure to congratulate all the residents of Currituck County on celebrating the 350th anniversary of your county. This is certainly a special occasion. Since 1668, Currituck County has stood proud as the northeasternmost corner of our state. The beautiful environment, wildlife, and cultures of the county reflect some of the best features of our coastal plains region. In honor of this outstanding milestone anniversary, I join you in commemorating the long history of Currituck County and celebrating the many people who have worked to make this wonderful place, make a wonderful place to live, work, and raise a family. I extend my best wishes to all the leadership and communities of Currituck County for a memorable event and continued success in all your future endeavors. With kind regards, I am very truly yours, Governor Roy Cooper." And that's all I had to comment tonight on. But I just wanted to say I thought it was a great year of events for the county.
Commissioner Etheridge, do you have anything for us this evening?
On behalf of the Department of Social Service, we'd like to thank everyone who participated in Operation Santa Claus. It was a great success, but it wouldn't have been without the citizens of Currituck County, and we just wish everybody a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Nothing this evening.
Come on. You're a man of so few words.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, and up next, administrative reports. We have the folks from the North Carolina Forest Service Annual Report Presentation. Celine.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. I'm Mike Patruncio. I'm District Forester out of Elizabeth City. I oversee the operations for nine counties in District 7. And I just wanted, just briefly, give you, advise you on our situation with administration for our district. The Currituck County Ranger, Eric LaFeveres, he was promoted to our district staff, and he's now gone through BLET in Elizabeth City. So, sorry I had to take him away from Currituck, but in the interim, the position is advertised till January 17th, 5:00 p.m. And in the meantime, Aaron Bishop is holding down the fort here as the Assistant County Ranger. He will continue to have the support of the adjacent counties and our district staff out of Elizabeth City, and we're gonna give him all the help he needs till we fill the county ranger position. We had a busy year. I'll let Aaron update you on that. A lot of good accomplishments, and myself and Aaron helped out with the Western wildfires, and it was a pleasure and honor to go out there and help out with that. And also, the Hurricane Florence, Aaron was down there in Carteret County, and helped out down in Duplin and Pender, and a lot of good experience that we learned down there to help out, apply up here in the event for these type of emergency services. With that, I'll let Aaron give the update. Thank you very much.
Thank you. For this year, I'd like to tell you what we do, just so everyone knows. Provide landowners with wildfire control, forest management assistance, water quality protection, information and education programs, urban forestry assistance, and forest pest control. For this year, we had 59 calls that we responded to. Out of all those calls, 25 were wildfire calls, and with the great assistance from the volunteer fire departments, we didn't have any large fires this year. We also provided Curva Beach with a five-ton... so everyone knows. Provide, uh, landowners with wildfire control, forest management assistance, water quality protection, information and education programs, urban forestry assistance, and forest pest control. For this year, uh, we had fifty-nine calls that we responded to. Uh, out of all those calls, twenty-five were wildfire calls. And with the great assistance from the volunteer fire departments, we, um, didn't have any large fires this year. We also provided Curva Beach with a five-ton military six-by-six truck through our DOD donation program. And after two years of them having it in service, it'll become their permanent vehicle. So, um, that's a big plus for them. Um, this upcoming year, I'd like to mention that we're setting up trainings for the volunteer fire department for wild fire control and chainsaw trainings. Um, for forest management this year, we did eight management plans, uh, three of them, um, which is three times what we've done, uh, compared to last year, since now we were fully staffed. Um, for water quality, um, we assisted, we conducted inspections on logging operations, um, for the laws of water quality. Uh, we conducted eleven this year on 264 acres. Um, education programs, we assisted and conducted eleven programs, which is twice as many as last year. Um, we hope to bring the trend up and keep getting more, getting out more. Um, urban assistance, we assisted three landowners with written assist. So if they had a tree in their yard, uh, we can assist them, tell them what's wrong with it, and, uh, give them a written thing on what they can do to better that tree, uh, which we do, uh, for free for citizens of North Carolina. So, um, we also assisted landowners in planting 900 trees for non-timber use. So people planted a lot of yard trees this year. Um, we also assisted with the Fourth of July fireworks in Corolla, um, for fire response. And we are here for any assistance in natural disaster. And that's everything we have for Kurutuck for this last year.
Is the, uh, Chainsaw Safety Course open to the public?
Um, I think-
I think in the past it used to be.
I can look into it and get back to you.
Because I've, I've taken that course. That was, that was pretty good. And, and if I remember correctly, if you're in a volunteer department, you can't use a chainsaw unless you've attended y'all's course, so.
Got you. Any other questions?
That'd be good.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up. Public hearings, uh, next item on the agenda, PB 18-26, David Shields, request for a zoning map amendment to rezone approximately .69 acres of agriculture to general business zoning. Currently zoned aged, the subject parcel is 2.69s in size with two acres currently zoned GB and .69 acres currently zoned ag. The property is located at 6615 Keratoke Highway in Grandy, parcel ID number 0108-000-011B-0000, Papa Branch Township. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Lo Cicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
For as long as she can hold out.
So I'll try to be efficient with my, uh, my voice tonight. Uh, what you have before you tonight is a traditional or a straight rezoning. Uh, this is a rarity. Typically we have, you have a conditional rezoning before you. Um, but this is for property located, um, at the corner of Keratoke Highway and Soundside Estates Drive. It's the Flippers, uh, the Flippers and the El Laredo Restaurant located in Grandy. Uh, as the chairman indicated, uh, this, the highlighted parcel right here, um, there's two acres that is zoned general business, uh, and the rear, uh, half acre, .69 acres is zoned ag. Um, and the applicant is looking to rezone the entire property to, uh, general business. Uh, it is in the full, in the 2006 land use plan, it is designated as full service, uh, within the Grandy subarea. So the applicant is requesting, uh, the great, a straight general business rezoning of the rear of the property. Uh, they are wanting to put a laundromat in the vacant, uh, one of the vacant stalls there in beside Flippers. And to do so, they are on a septic system and to do so, they would need to increase their septic area. Um, so, uh, at this site plan, the areas to the rear of the property, or the area that is currently zoned ag, is where the drain fields and some of the septic systems will be. For them to have this system associated with their business, the property must be, uh, rezoned to general business. So, uh, and we do not allow split zoning or bifurcated zoning, which, to have conditional, uh, you can't have conditional rezoning for a split zoning area. So they were, they were gonna ask for the straight general business rezoning. Uh, the planning staff and the planning board, uh, do recommend this rezoning, um, because it is consistent with the land use plan. There's policy CD two, that commercial and office development of greater than neighborhood scales shall be encouraged to cluster in commercial or mixed-use centers to curtail the proliferation. Uh, policy CD four, that highway-oriented commercial uses should be clustered along segments of the highways and contain land uses which are mutually compatible. And policy ED four, in addition to recruitment and expansion of a major new industry, that can, um, there is value in small business, startups, expansions, and spendoffs, uh, are valuable for the community. Um, so this is a pretty, like I said, this is, uh, what we consider a traditional or standard rezoning, not a conditional rezoning. Um, and if you have any questions about this, uh, project, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for staff? Everybody good? Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward? Do we have anyone here for them? Guess not. All right, now I had, uh, no one sign up for public comment this evening. I'll entertain a motion for a vote.
I moved, I'm sorry. I moved to approve PB 18-26 because the request is consistent with the policies of the land use plan, which some of them are CD one, neighborhoods serving commercial districts should be encouraged to locate where a collector or secondary road intersects with the street of greater or larger value. ED four, in addition to recruitment and expansion of major new industries, uh, we should always look after our small businesses. I think I've stated in the past that if it wasn't for small businesses, there wouldn't be hardly any business at all. So we have, we should encourage them. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it would result in logical and orderly development patterns.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, PB 18-25, Jerry L. Olds and Don S. Williams, Sr., who was known as Fairby Acres, zoning map amendment. Request for a zoning map amendment to relocate the split zoning of approximately 7.7 acres from general business to agriculture. From property located in Moyoc, west of Beechwood Acres, parcel ID number 0031-000-064N-0000, Moyoc Township. And with that, we're back to Ms. Lo Cicero.
This is indeed a rarity to, uh, traditional rezonings. Um, in one night, I think there's, um, we haven't seen traditional rezoning, uh, during my tenure here. Um, uh, this is for property located near Beechwood Shores along Keratoke Highway. Uh, the property is 5.79 acres. Um, it is, uh, both rural and conservation in the, uh, 2006 land use plan. Um, and what they're looking to do is to relocate the, uh, general business line here. This was, um, redone, um, let's see, uh, GB and ag, uh, general business and ag in 1989, it was rezoned. So they are, they're requesting to move the general business line. Um, this area right here will be rezoned into, from ag, um, from GB to ag, this area, this hatched area. It appears a little bit lighter red, um, and to re, and to move the general business, uh, line consistent right here with the edge of this existing property. Um, they are, this is gonna be 7.7 acres from GB to ag. There are currently two billboards located, um, adjacent to Keratoke Highway in this existing GB zone portion of the property. They're, um, and then they're requesting, they're gonna create some commercial lots once this, once this rezoning, if this rezoning is approved, they're gonna create commercial lots, um, along the commercial frontage to house these billboards. Um, so, let's see. Um, the planning board considered this at their December meeting and they did, um, recommend approval of this, um, of this regular rezoning. This is a downzoning. This is going from GB to ag. Um, and staff does recommend approval to this. It is consistent with our land use plan with policy AG four, that county growth and management tools to include, uh, particularly zoning should provide protection to agriculture. This is increasing our ag land, ag zoned. Um, so it will be protecting agriculture and other resource-based activities from incompatible land uses. And policy ML one, that Kurutuck County recognizes particular interest of residents and property owners in the mainland area in preserving farmland and open space. The county shall exercise diligence in applying policies, plans, and actions that will encourage compact growth and preservation of farmland and open space in the mainland area. Um, so if there's any questions for me at this point about the standard rezoning?
Yes, uh, could this potentially be looked at spot zoning for the small piece of parcel land?
Um, since it's downzoning, um, and the, for, for the, the frontage, the GB-
For what they want to rezone.
Well, there's, it's gonna be consistent, the area that they want to be rezoned is consistent with the remainder of the property. It's ag, the second, let me get, okay. So this highlighted property-
Hmm.
-is the entire parcel. And they're just rezoning about 7.7 acres to be consistent with the ag. So I don't consider that spot zoning to make it consistent with the remainder of the property. And, uh, the neighbors, the neighboring property is also zoned ag. This nice, the, the brown color on this zoning map.
And you know what, when I brought that, there was, there was some property along the main highway in Papa Branch that was all ag and there was a, one section that was left out of general business. And they were trying to get that, um, redone to general business and that was considered spot zoning to bring it in conformity with the rest of the general business. That's why we were just concerned how this would look.
I think this was done, um, in 1989. I, I think, um, there was the, the GB zoning for, uh, frontage along Keratoke Highway and I, this, and this happened during that time. So, and they're taking it from GB back to ag, downzoning it to make it consistent with the remainder of the northern part of the parcel. So I would not consider that spot zoning, um, on that.
Excuse me, how many acres are gonna be left for the general business? Just where the billboards are?
Uh, just this area and it, this is the area right here that's gonna be left, that the road frontage, um, and I think the applicant does have a representative here today that can maybe give, let's see if I can find it.
We'll, we'll get you in just one second, sir. Gotta go through the process.
So, Ms. Lo, let me, I'll have to get back with you on that, about how many?
Well, what's gonna be left? Would that be large enough for any type of commercial building or business to be located on it?
Uh, we'll, um, they'll have to meet the minimum lot size when they come in to subdivide that property or to create, they were gonna creating new lots and they're gonna be, uh, minimum lot size for GB is 40,000 square feet, so they would be able to meet that minimum lot size.
Okay. And, and downgrading, uh, what does that do for density? Just so everyone understands that downgrading it is, is a good thing in this, in this particular instance.
Downzoning, um, to ag, does, um, you have a, either a larger lot size, um, or, um, a lower density.
Right.
So our, we would essentially have, um, like three acre minimum lot size.
And then, uh, it's brought up during public comment, um, how many houses and flooding concerns, which we're used to hearing around here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when they come forward with that, they will address the flooding issues. Um, I'll let you speak to that just a little bit so that-
Well, we don't have, at this point, we haven't, we just considering the rezoning so that they can figure out exactly the, um, uh, the area that they have to deal with. Um, and we haven't seen essentially a-
Right.
-a finalized plan. They will have to meet our stormwater requirements, uh, when they come in. With any type of residential development in that area, they would have to meet that, our requirements for stormwater, um, open, conserved open space, road maintenance, I mean, uh, road standards and items like that with their, with their subdivision, if they come in with one.
Okay, thank you.
We're not approving a subdivision, we're just approving downgrading.
Right.
Correct. This is just the rezoning, um, of the, of that 7.7 acres right here, back to ag. That's all, they're proving at this point.
But that would allow them to do a subdivision or something like that?
Um, it would allow them, um, uh, more flexibility with a conservation subdivision, um, because we, you know, that would be allowed in the ag zoning, a conservation subdivision. But in a conservation subdivision, there would be more open space set aside than, and let's say it's like the single-family mainland. They would, it'd be a lower density or more open space, uh, set aside.
Okay. Any more questions?
It would slightly be under four acres of GB would remain across the front of the property. Uh, they, they have it noted here, it's 3.97 of acres of GB would remain GB.
Not just, yeah. All right. That was why I was asking you about public comment. Would you like to speak to public comment on this? But they have to get to the applicant first, okay? So let the applicant come up and then maybe, maybe, maybe they'll address some of your concerns in that time too. So the applicant or the representative, please come forward.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Warren Edis. I'm president of Quivell and Associates. We're here tonight representing, uh, Mr. Jerry Old and Don Williams. Um, as Lori pointed out, this is one parcel. It is currently split zoned. Um, the line, the GB line that exists is a GIS line. It's not a meets and downs description. It's, it's just one of those things that it happened. And so now they have one large parcel that's got two different zonings, two different zoning, uh, designations. Um, they need to create a real line and subdivide it so that they can, they can free them up to do other things with it. So the proposal is to move the line as shown. Um, and then, right now, what they would do is they'd take that remaining parcel that Dan gave you the acreage, um, that would become four separate lots, minor subdivision, four lots, four, uh, GB lots. Um, there is a discussion about coming back later with a subdivision proposal, um, definitely in response to Mr. Dimnicki, I believe. Um, you know, today's stormwater rules are a little bit different than the ones for some of the, um, adjacent subdivisions. You know, with, today we observe a 30-foot buffer from all the wetlands. Uh, we have a much more robust stormwater collection and treatment program through the county right now. So I, I feel like this site won't be contributing to the problem. We're gonna have to run stormwater models. Um, all the things that we do when we do these subdivisions, you know, we, um, I think that will be addressed. Um, we've, we've held community meetings, um, gone through all the steps. You know, initially, we were gonna approach this a different way. Um, once we talked with staff, we realized this was split zoned and then if we just could rezone it, downzone it, then that would, um, keep us from having to do a, uh, a conditional zoning, single-family mainland. So that was our approach. We did it with consultation with staff. So that was our approach, we did it with consultation with staff. Another benefit of this is that by removing that much GB acreage, it's gonna limit the amount of impervious coverage we can put on the site. So again, that's another way that you'll, there'll be some stormwater benefit, we'll be generating less stormwater. So I, other than those items, I don't have a whole lot else to offer, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
That's, um, that's the property that was recently logged, correct?
It's been farmed, it's been, it's been at agriculture.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And the shaded area in the back is a large expanse of wetlands that run down the boundary of the property.
And, and you're, and you're asking to put it back to Ag, which I understood that section, but it's not gonna actually, it's not gonna be farmed, you're gonna, your intent is to sub, do it subdivision?
That's their intent, yes. And they'll have to bring that forward.
Any further questions for the applicant? Thank you. Now moving on to public comment. Mr. Dimnicki, if you'd like to speak, please come on up.
Yeah, I'd like her to bring up that picture where the, this pink is and she's got a green line going across there. Yeah, right there. Is this the area we're talking about? Can you see my finger?
The green highlighted area? We can't, we can't see what you're looking at there, but we can see it on the big screen.
Okay, you can see the big screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're, see where Kerituck Highway is and that GB red line?
Yes, sir.
Now we got the green line going all the way back there, all the way back to Hastings Drive, all the way back to the, that's Tol's Bay back there.
Mm-hmm.
No, Tol's Creek. Is that the, what they're talking about for development?
Um, they're talking about that entire parcel.
Okay, so that's gonna be the development there, right?
But that's not the purpose of this meeting.
No. But he, eventually they'll be, that's what they're.
He'd have to come before us, that'll be a whole separate.
Whole nother.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the planning that your department there is looking at from that green line following Bridge Creek there, there's about 100 feet of wetland going through there.
Well, that will be all part of the, if, if they come back with, and we understand that's their intent, when they come back with a subdivision application or subdivision plan, they will have to show wetlands, they will have to handle stormwater, they will have to meet all our requirements pertaining to those things.
Okay, because, you know, all the way back to Hastings Drive, that's, it's all wetland, it's okay. All right. I just, you guys taking care of the wetlands, right?
Yes, they would have to delineate the wetlands and they would have to have, um, uh, open space set aside.
Why get a picture like this? I don't get no Google or anything.
You can get this type of information on the county's website, on the county's GI, the county's GIS website, this type of.
That's what I just told you, I don't get on no website.
Well, I can, if you wanna contact my department, we can give you.
Okay, I'll contact you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on. Would anyone like to make a motion this evening? Oh, sorry, closed public comment, thank you. Now entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PB 1825 because the request is consistent with the land use plan, rural classification in the Moayoc suburb area, and is consistent with the following land use plan policies. Policy AG4, county growth management tools, including particularly, or particularly zoning, should provide protection to agriculture and other resource-based activities from incompatible land uses such as a residential subdivision in the midst of a generally uninterrupted farmland. Policy ML1, Currituck County recognizes the particular interest of residents and property owners in the mainland area and preserving farmland and open space. The county shall exercise diligence in applying policies, plans, and actions that will encourage compact growth and the preservation of farmland and open space in the mainland area.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none? No? Next here. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, PB 08-48, Cape Kerituck. Horgan Mason, Papa Branch, 08-48, Cape Kerituck, again, Horgan Mason. amended conditional district plan unit development zoning overlay to decrease the number of dwelling units density, canal realignment, reduce wetland fill, and reorient development layout properly located on 291 West Side Lane, Palace Point, Papa Branch Township, parcel identification That, you're up again, Mrs. Cicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I may need the county attorney on this. Um, just a notification from the applicant's representative that they would like to table this, uh. This proposal, this application.
Okay.
So, I don't know if we would need the applicant's representative to speak and make that request formal.
I would think they would need to make that request, I believe that the ordinance does allow for an applicant to request continuance of a public hearing.
But in person, correct?
I would expect that they, they would do it in person, I would expect they have a representative here.
Representative, they do have a representative here and.
They do, oh.
Okay, do we have a representative here?
Again, I'm Warren Edis with Quible. We've not been able to work out a, I guess, a, a plan, there were some conditions that were put on us during the planning board meeting, specifically with number of units that would be allowed as the marina was being constructed. I understand maybe y'all have had a workshop and this might have been discussed, but I want more time to discuss with staff a reasonable plan that I can get our, the developers to agree to, because currently the plan that was added to the motion at the planning board level was not acceptable and I understand that might be reduced further and that's something that we're not willing to agree to, so we would like more time to come back and work with the county and try to come up with something that's agreeable. Because what we don't wanna do is we don't want to go through all the permitting that we're going through at the state and federal level, which is underway, I've been copying staff all along, we're gonna be having extensive meetings this week. We've already prepared all the permits, but it's critical that some of the housing units be able to be constructed as the marina is being built, at least some components of it. It's a very expensive undertaking, the intent is not to construct or to offer residential units and never build the marina, I know that's happened before and it's happened in other counties. So we're, we're willing to come back after we've had a chance to speak with you and try to come up with some creative ways. We can give you some assurance that if we can get the permits for all this, that this will happen and, and you know, there's some performance markers that you can, you can believe in and, so that's our intent and that's why I think that some, some of this is new information that I was getting as I was coming in the meeting, so I'm, I just felt like it was better to pull back and have a chance to, to talk with you in the coming month. Hopefully that's acceptable.
All right, well, I'm gonna have to ask staff what my next move is, is I haven't.
Well, the UDO provides that a, a, a party may ask for deferral of their application and the board may grant that deferral for good cause. They may only be granted one deferral, that may not be deferred for more than six months. And should they ask for a second deferral, their application would be deemed withdrawn. But it's up to this board at this point to determine whether you believe there's good cause to defer consideration of this matter tonight.
How long do you think you need, would you need to defer?
I don't need, a month.
I mean, the maximum's six months.
Yeah, a month would be plenty of time. I expect.
A month?
Be here in a month, yes, sir. Well, I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion that, that we defer this for one month's timeframe and then bring it back and present it to us.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, we have a new appointment to the Admiral Memorial Commission.
Are we gonna pass on any public comment?
Yes, sir, there's nothing happening this evening, so we'll, when it comes back up again, please come back up again. Now come on up to the podium, sir, for a minute. No, sir.
And thank you for Walter, who's a member of MOA, we'd like to get more of that going.
And what's your name again, your address?
David Lane.
Okay.
I live at 119 Braeburn Drive, Palace Point, Kamara Golf Course area. Actually, I'm asking you to educate me since I've heard some things tonight that I really wasn't aware of. Number one, I do wanna say, I'm speaking for myself and only. Neighbors, in the past, I've addressed you as the president of the community. Secondly, we have no objections to, I have no objections to the marina and the development, which I think would be great for Southern Currituck, Chris and Manny.
Any discussions needs to be done? I think we might be, are we stepping outside of?
Well, I mean, I mean the.
I don't think it's fair to have any discussions.
I would say the comments that, that this gentleman might be making for or against this application would not be something properly considered by the board.
I was defining myself.
That, that there might be some.
Is that, if that's inappropriate?
Hang on one second, sir, we need to, we may be procedurally.
And there might be some other forum other than this meeting at this time for, for Mr. Lane to become educated about the matter and to be able to express his views to the board.
Okay. So with that, with that being said, I think we're gonna have to cut you off here. Now, if you do have questions, you can refer them to staff.
That's what I was gonna ask them.
Of course of business. And then if you wanna bring any of those comments forward, when this comes before us again, you're welcome to do so at that time.
Thank you very much.
Just call Leanne.
And that would be.
Yeah, there you go. She's the guru.
The planning staff, I'm sure will be happy to answer questions for you and help you out, sir.
Leanne's answering stuff for me before.
She's, she's pretty good.
Yeah, I wanna get educated on the roads, is what I wanna get educated.
Oh. If you, if you could give me a call, I'd be happy to discuss.
Would you? Thank you.
I'm not a bomb, but.
Well, I know, but thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate that.
Or if you want answers, Lori.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time. Happy New Year.
Have a good evening.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, as regarding item one under new business that you had opened up, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Commissioner Paul Beaumont to the, to appoint him to the Admiral Commission.
Sir, do you have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, hearing none? You're the man, Paul. All right, next on the item on this consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none passes. County managers report.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, I will be recessing this meeting until January 14th at 4:30. We will reconvene here in this room and I didn't need to discuss. That was it, right? I didn't need to discuss the reasons for the.
Again, you said January 14th?
Yes, sir.
4:30 here in this room? That's, that's sufficient.
Okay.
And that'll of course be a continuation of your regular meeting, at which time you may consider any, and act on any business that might come before the board at a regular meeting.
Okay. Do we need to get a vote?
4:30.
There's no vote on that as we recess.
No, you're recessing as chairman.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone, I'm gonna reconvene the January 7th Board of Commissioners meeting, today is January 14th. On the agenda this evening, consideration of a nominee for appointment by District Two vacancy on the Board of Commissioners, Bobby Hanig's seat. We've invited Brian Bass in this evening to come up and speak about the GOP's process, how they arrived at the nomination they put forth to us this evening. And at this time, I'd like to call Mr. Bass up and give him a few minutes just to tell us and the general public how the process went. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all for having me here this evening.
Does it sound like it?
It sounds like it to me.
Yeah, it is, look at the volume sound.
I think it's on, yeah.
All right. Mr. Bass, if you would, your name and.
Uh, my name is Brian Bass and I am Chair of the Currituck GOP. This selection was made basically by our executive committee. We had 12 voting members that were involved in this process pretty much from, from day one. We, at one time, we had four applicants that came forward, one of them, Carolyn Hickock Debo withdrew about two weeks before the interviews were supposed to take place. Certain members of the executive committee met informally with each of the applicants and that was just made, basically an informal meeting to make them feel a lot more comfortable and to recognize a few faces during the interview process. Then they actually gave us their resumes or their personal biographies. That was disseminated to all the executive committee members to research and look at. We had a meeting that we, where none of the applicants attended and the entire executive committee went over the resumes and talked candidly about each applicant at that time. Then we scheduled the interviews. Once the interviews were done, and that was done Monday, the 7th of this month, we wanted to make sure that we had as many members on the executive committee present that we could. Therefore, we waited until after the holidays, because at one time we were afraid we were gonna be missing four or five members and, and that was not gonna be a fair process. We'd have a quorum, but in actuality, three to four people could have determined this recommendation, so we waited until after the holidays. There were several questions that were presented to each applicant. They were done on an individual basis, we conducted it just like a job interview where the ones came in one at a time. We did not time each question, we just told each applicant that we wanted the interview process to run between 20 and 25 minutes. They could spend as much time as they wanted on any question, they were able to revisit questions at the end of the interview or talk about anything that may not have been covered in the questions that were asked. Each of you has a copy of the questions from the interview. Then the committee voted secretly, there was a secret ballot where they, they just put a check mark beside who they would recommend. And at that time, Selena Jarvis was, was the recommendation from the executive committee. And that's where we are this evening. So if you have any questions, you know, feel free to pose them to me right now.
And just, just to reiterate, so when Commissioner Hanig left to become Representative Hanig, he was Republican and that's what prompted the Republican Party to.
Yes.
Step up and, and the, and the position had to be filled by another Republican.
I think there's a, yeah, had to be filled by a Republican, a registered Republican or any, you know, it basically says of the same party that, that the vacated seat is of. We actually had a time limit, I think you have 60 days before actually someone has to be sworn in, so we were under a bit of a crunch, especially with the holidays coming. But we had, we had actually kind of talked about the process, we had sort of spread the word around. A couple of commissioners had gotten in touch with me as early as September and October, just saying, you know, we, this is the process, this is the statute. And I said, just have them get in touch with me and we're gonna go forward with it. And we did post on the GOP Facebook page after Mr. Hanig had officially vacated. We really couldn't do anything officially by putting something out in the media or on our website that there was a vaca, a vacated seat, but we were anticipating that and we pretty much tried to get the word out to everyone. And people that follow the politics of Currituck County, they, they were on top of everything, they, they were aware of the issues.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bass?
I did have one, the, will you explain just not to us, I know we already did in the work session, but the secret ballot process, just so like, you know, if somebody's watching this at home and they say, oh my gosh, they.
Yeah, for your, for your home audience.
Yeah, if you, if you don't mind doing that, I appreciate it.
Actually, I prepared ballots and they were done just like this, where there were, the names were listed and then they would just make a check mark beside the name. I actually changed the order of the names too, from ballot to ballot, so that way somebody couldn't say, oh, I saw this individual check, the num, the first person, that was so-and-so, so I know they voted for so-and-so. I really tried to do my due diligence on this to make it as comfortable for the executive committee as possible, as far as the voting was concerned and for the applicants as well. well. The questions were available. All the executive committee members had the questions, too, so they were able to follow those.
Thank you.
Mr. Bass, do you mind giving us the vote total?
Yes. There were 12 votes. Four went for Mr. Craddock and eight went for Ms. Jarvis.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bass, for coming up this evening and presenting that information to us.
Thank you.
It should be noted that there were originally four candidates that stepped up to the plate and one withdrew. And I just wanted to thank them. We, as commissioners, know what it takes. You think you do, looking in, but you don't until you actually get in here and you get the phone calls and you have to do all this stuff. And so Mr. Jason Belangio was one of the people that stepped forward. Thank you, Jason, for, for offering yourself up. Mr. Stephen Craddock, he's here this evening. And of course, Ms. Selena Jarvis. And it takes a lot, and I just wanted to say thank you again for, for being willing to serve your community, be under public scrutiny. You know how Facebook can be. They're going to come after you out there, so it, it takes a lot. So thank you again. And at this time, I know a few commissioners may want to say a couple of things, so I'll just start with you, sir, and.
All right. I just would like to reiterate, I mean, there's three good candidates. Well, technically, there was four, but one withdrew for personal reasons, for their family. Mr. Craddock is here. He's done a lot for the county and volunteered, and I appreciate that. And he even stated that in the email, if he was not the chosen one, he would continue to be that guy, and I have a lot of respect for that. And I think, you know, we should commend him for that. Ms. Jarvis, like you said, the same thing. I mean, we had three left good candidates, Jason Belangio as well, that have lived in this county for numerous years. And like you said, they don't know what they're getting into until they get into it. And, but I, I just wanted to thank, thank them for, for their putting up, you know, their, their personal time and everything to go through this whole process. The only thing I did wish, maybe we could have interviewed all three of them. I know with time restraints and so forth, with having to replace Bobby in a certain amount of time, we didn't have that time, so. But that's the, that's the only thing. But I'd, I'd like to thank the, them especially, because they're the ones that put the most time in, as well as the GOP and, and everybody else that, that had any partake in it. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to state, it's going to be a hard decision. Mr. Craddock is here, Ms. Jarvis is here, and, and I know Mr. Belangio was, was one as well. And when I heard the outcome of the votes, I wanted to make sure I had the opportunity to personally speak to each one prior to this meeting tonight, so I could ask a few of my own questions, get to understand each one of them. And after discussing with both of them, they both made it difficult. They're both well-respected in the community. They both work hard out there. They, they, they have a lot to provide to this commissioners' board. So I just, again, wanted to thank them, but they, their conversations made it difficult to, to make a decision tonight. But, but I'm prepared tonight to, to make a decision on the, on the candidate I feel like will serve this board in the next two years. And like I said, not, not that the other individuals couldn't do it. I just, we just need to make a decision and move forward, so I want to thank them again.
Did you want to? Northeast, North Carolina. Northeast. Never mind. Go ahead.
I'd like to also thank the candidates who stepped forward. Also like to thank the GOP. I'm sure it was a hard decision. It takes a lot to step forward and decide that you would like to serve. And I think we were very fortunate to have people who are so passionate about serving. We certainly hope that people, if you're not selected, that you'll continue to serve in other capacities. We always have committees and different things that we're looking for good people to serve in. And anytime anybody serves their county, they're to be commended, and we thank you for that.
Commissioner Beaumont?
As, having survived and gone through that, this exact same process, I know what it's like to try and figure out the game as you're in the middle of it. And it can certainly be a little intimidating on the front end. And again, I, I too want to reiterate my fellow commissioners and thanking each and every person that, that threw their name in the hat. Even some at the last minute made phone calls and, and got them thinking that, you know, maybe this is something that they want to pursue in the future. And I, I've always been a big fan of community participation. That's the only way we can make Kurutuck better, is being able to capitalize over the resources that actually reside in our county. So to reiterate, thanks to each and every one of the candidates that threw their name in the ring, and I'm certain that the next two years will be very, very productive in the county.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, it sounds like we're ready to move forward. Would anybody like to make a motion this evening?
Yes, sir. It's my honor and privilege to nominate the GOP selection, Selena Jarvis, to fill the remaining term of former Commissioner Bobby Hanig.
Do we have a second?
And I would be pleased to second that nomination.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.